Yes, Madam President, I move to appoint Julie Gilery to the position of Attendants Officer.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. George and a second by Mrs. James. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote by raising your hands. Motion passes.
How do you vote?
Should we give him the opportunity to vote? Okay, Mr. Burdine.
Yes, Madam President, I move to approve the resignation and release agreement between Fort Bend ISD and Christina Carson, certified employee.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Burdine and a second by Mrs. James. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote by raising your hands. Motion passes. Mrs. James.
I move that the board issue a school district teaching permit for CTE, culinary arts and hospitality and tourism to Kelly Hubert.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote by raising your hands. Motion passes. Moving on.
Oh, I have two more.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot.
I move that the board issue a school district teaching permit for CTE criminal justice to Fabia Menendez.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Mrs. James.
Mrs. Tosan, I move that the board issue a school district teaching permit for CTE criminal justice to Cassandra Reynolds.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Now, we're moving on to our review items. Item 6A, we have several proposed 2007-2014 bond program construction projects. Number one is our upgraded electrical service at Willeridge High School and McCullough Middle School and blanket easement. Dr. Dupree.
Yes, our Executive Director of Design and Construction, Oscar Perez, is going to actually discuss each of these items, kind of in the aggregate. So that would be everything under item A, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. He's also prepared to discuss with the board, kind of the contingency status of the bond program because you asked about that at a previous meeting and we wanted to kind of share that in the context of this discussion as well. Now, if we're done playing musical chairs.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Dupree. The first item that we have is the Willeridge High School and the McCullough Middle School, like the overhead projects. So what we're seeking here is we're seeking a construction service agreement with Safer &amp; Son LTD in the amount of $1,076,44 and a construction services agreement with CenterPoint Energy in the amount of $154,954 project budgets totaling $1,431,840 and budget amendment totaling $817,377 for the electric service upgrade at Willeridge High School and McCullough Middle School campuses, an authorization for the superintendent of schools to negotiate and execute the contracts as described below, and additionally, staff recommends consideration and possible approval of a blanket easement with CenterPoint Energy to complete the work. In summary, what we're looking at doing here is that Willeridge High School and McCullough Middle School are two campuses that Fort Bend ISD at this point owns the primary service and the primary service is the actual electric service that feeds the campus. The primary service is the overhead wiring, the poles coming to the transformers, which then becomes secondary, steps it down and brings it on to the campus. And in the past, this was a way that service was provided, but with new standards, it is customary for CenterPoint Energy to be the one that owns that primary service. And so what we're wanting to do here is we're wanting to go ahead and relinquish our ownership. This is old service that could fail at any time and go ahead and allow CenterPoint to come in and provide service to these two campuses. The installation and eventual removal will also not only replace the overhead, but it will replace the transformers, step-down transformers at McCullough, but not at Willeridge. You may recall, and it's been probably a little over a year when there was a failure there, an item was brought to the board and the secondary generators were replaced. So we're not replacing those. We're keeping that, but we are replacing all of the primary that's coming to these two schools. In addition, we also have an alternate for a temporary generator at McCullough because when we're doing this switchover, we're coming in and we're going to put in a temporary line that then, over spring break of '17, will go ahead and shut down and will switch from the primary that we have right now to the temporary so that then we can demo the existing primary and then CenterPoint can come back in. During that transfer, we are going to have to keep a few systems up so we have an alternate here for a generator to be able to do that. The other thing that we're asking for, just as a clarification for a blanket easement, is this is an easement that we would provide CenterPoint. And the reason it's called a blanket easement is so that it allows some leeway since we have our own power line in there and we're going to have to, as I said, put in a temporary and then they come and put their own. It allows leeway to go and establish where that easement is actually going to be. And in the meantime, it also, by being a blanket easement, it gives Fort Bend ISD the leeway that if there's any glitches and before, you know, all the legal gets handled, we can still have power energizing. We're not without power by going ahead and granting a blanket easement. And I'll answer any questions that y'all may have.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Does anyone have any questions on this particular item 6A1?
You had like, what was it, $88,000 or something? Jane, could you scroll back up? For supplement. Could you... The budget amendment. Oh, so that's what we're basically asking for now because we already budgeted for the other stuff. Is that...
Correct.
Okay, never mind.
Mrs. James.
Dave, I didn't even understand your question. That's all right, though, Dave. It's okay. It was a special language. I guess you can...
He understood it.
He understood and that's all that matters, I guess. Okay. I have a question about, there's this, there's, in the right up here, it talks about a, yes, on this page, right in the middle, it's talking about a notice to proceed allowing for the submittal process. What types of things have to be submitted for? Are those permits or some sort of, what is that?
The submittal process is actually the materials that'll be utilized in order to be able to complete the scope of work. So what we're asking is, once we receive board approval, then we will go ahead and give a notice to proceed so that they can submit and then the architect or engineer, in this case, the engineer, would review those to make sure they're in conformance with what it is that we're going to be installing. Once they approve, then the contractor can order those materials so they'll be ready when we start doing the work for the switchover in March.
Okay, so that gives a chance to start the procurement of the materials or that they need? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
That is correct.
Okay, and I asked about the, or you answered my question about what alternate one was, so I wasn't sure what that was. And then when it talks about CenterPoint, in the budget section, there's a line... No, next page. Yes, CenterPoint Energy overhead. And is that referring to something that's going to go over people's heads? Or is that referring to something that's administrative costs?
No, ma'am, that is actually the poles and the wires that will be bringing the power to the sites.
Okay, okay, as opposed to underground?
Correct.
Great. I don't think I have any other questions.
Great, thank you. Moving on to item 6A2.
Thank you, this...
Westside Ag Center.
Yes, ma'am. Once again, the administrator recommends and seeks approval for a construction services agreement with Bass Construction in the amount of $2,608, project budgets totaling $3,071,757, and budget amendments totaling $856,757 for the construction of the new Westside Ag facility, and authorization for the superintendent of schools to negotiate and execute the contract as described below. And on this particular one, I'm also going to ask Ashley to come up to help me answer some of the questions that you may have as far as the project itself. One of the things that I do want to let you know right off the bat that has come up from the time that we put this document together and now is that we have been notified that there will be some additional cost because of some slurry drilling that's going to be required for the foundation. And that has already occurred on Elementary 49, which is just, you know, right adjacent to it. What's happening with all the rain that we had and everything, the water tables have risen and as they've gone in and started to drill, they're encountering water at a fairly shallow depth. And so at this point, they're providing a cost that we would bring back to you before next Monday to let you know what that is. It doesn't mean that we're going to expend all that amount, but if they start to go ahead and do their drilling and they run into that situation, we just want to be sure that we can go ahead and do some slurry drilling, maintain the integrity of the hold before the concrete goes in place. So at this point, I'm going to let Ashley just speak a little bit about the project.
Sure. Well, why don't we see if the board member, so let me just make sure that I understand you're going to bring us the potential additional cost for the slurry drilling. You're going to get that to us this week?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. So, you know, we were coming to you with a budget for you to approve, but based on information that we received since we put this together, we need to go ahead and amend that budget. So when it comes to you on Monday, there'll be an increase of that $3,071.
So there'll be an increase to that. It will be more than $3,071,757.
Correct, and it's an increase of approximately $15,000.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Do we have any questions on this one? Mr. Rosenthal.
So basically, we're kind of over budget by $856,000. Is that what this is kind of saying?
May I?
Yes.
It's on. So actually, what we are proposing is the base bid along with the five alternates. And so that $2,608 includes all five alternates. That includes the high-volume, low-speed fans, radiant heating system, removable livestock pins, animal pins, and additional site lighting and security cameras. The base bid also, last time we came to you, we had indicated some additional costs that we were trying to decipher based on the remoteness of the site. We found that we are going to have to have a sanitary sewer lift station, stormwater, and a fire main. All of those were costs that we had proposed, a potential budget below the line of what those would be, with the exception of a fire main, and we had indicated that we were meeting with the fire marshal that week. And so we did. It is required. The site is in between 49, Elementary 49, and Travis, but it is in a remote location. We are not right on the access road, so it takes us a while to get there.
Ms. Helliger.
Okay, thank you. So I have some general questions, maybe that you all can help me out. So one is about this particular budget. We've got, we're over $856,000. When we initially did the initial requirements, we missed these pieces that you just described, that you were adding in for $856,000. So my question now is, and then we're going to come back again for $15,000 for the water, the sewage drain and whatnot. So what's the confidence level of this particular bid? Also because you have in here a project contingency of zero. What's the confidence level on this budget?
I actually feel really good about it. We actually, according to, when we came with the schematic design, we didn't have the CV local policy that included to add design contingency and to actually set up the project budget as such that has the construction contingency. We did not have the soft cost in there. We've incorporated them in at this point. I've worked with some, Sean Bogle, to look at how they furnished and equipped the past Ag barns. Unfortunately, that data is 20 years old. So we did include a cost for FFE, fixtures for return equipment, in this as well. So that budget increase includes not only the construction, but also the actual turnkey delivery of the facility.
So that's because we recently changed FFE? Is that why?
But, Oscar, the...
Yes, well, this project was brought to the board initially in 2007.
Okay, okay, all right. Enough said. Enough said. All right, so then, so in general, this is a 2007 bud, so this particular company, Bass Construction, they were on the initial list of hierarchy to receive the next bid?
No, we actually went out for CSP bids in May. We received three responses in June and they were awarded as the best value. There's a actual matrix in there to show how the committee ranked them, not only a price, but it was a full...
So then, so then, so this is my general question for the remaining 3, 4, 5, and 3, 4, 5. There's a 2014 list that these contractors, who we are recommending to receive these bids, they are currently on our list and we didn't change, we didn't change the bid package or the bid numbers and all that, the ranking. Did we change that?
No, ma'am, in this case, with, when you're going out for a request for proposal, you don't have a list at that point. You're advertising and, you know, different contractors will go ahead and bid the project and this is one of the contractors that bid the project.
So we don't go out for bids for contractors? We only, I mean, so we don't prioritize or rank our contractors? We only rank our architects?
May I take that?
Yes, sir.
In this case, we went out for a new competitive sealed proposal and it's open for anybody to bid. Any interested party may bid. It's advertised for two consecutive weeks. It's on our website. Any interested party can bid. There's also a notification system that the district has that notifies over 1,000 companies. So it's totally open. In this case, we received these three bids.
So I'm not talking just for 2007. I was just asking in general of the process. I know, I know, what is this, number 6, 2, I understand it's 2007, then 3, 4, and 5 was 2014. So we went out for a competitive bid for those. So we're saying that there's no, we're not using any type of rank list anymore? We've done away with that? Is that...
Well, we're doing that. We have that for the professional services for the architects. And so that's handled differently. The professional services is handled differently than the contractors for the construction.
That was my question. So do you have...
So it's handled differently. I mean, because when these projects come up, I mean, they're, you know, obviously the dollars are big, but they're reacting to the market at that time when we put the bid out. They're reacting to their own workloads and such. And so we don't have a quote-unquote "approved" list of contractors. We try to, we contact all the players, make sure they know that that's out there.
In the case of the professional services bid, we issued a request for qualifications earlier and over 100 companies responded to that. It's essentially the same process. You have to evaluate all of the proposals and rank them all out. But when we took that to the board, we received board approval to use those professional service providers for the 2014 bond program.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, as you know, I know a little bit more this year than I did last year. Just a little bit more, you know. And so I wanted to make sure that we were, at least I understand what the consistent practices that we use for professional services versus contractors. Because I know we had lots of conversation last year around this time around that. So I just wanted to make sure I understood. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Helliger. Mrs. James.
I have a question about this project. Is this, it's listed here in the 2007 bond program. Is this project being managed by Jacobs or is it an in-house project?
This is being managed by Fort Bend ISD.
Okay, so one of the things I noticed on here was that, and maybe this was just an error, but that in the summary, it talks about Jacobs being, personnel being involved in scoring some of the criteria. So I just wondered if that was just because it was kind of cut and pasted from a different one or if that was actually true.
I believe that they were used for safety. That was to make it consistent with all of the projects that we had on 2014. They have the personnel that can assist us with that and evaluating that particular division. The rest of it was all done through Fort Bend ISD personnel.
Okay, so are they involved then on the safety evaluation of this project? Do they, do we have some arrangement with them to provide safety services for these projects?
No, ma'am. They only do it in the evaluation of the actual bid package itself.
So do we have a safety officer assigned to this construction project? Or safety, any type of safety personnel?
No, ma'am, not at this time.
Ms. Helliger.
When does it get assigned?
There, Fort Bend ISD does not have a person that's designated just for safety. So the safety is the project manager that goes on site when they do their observations and everything. They go ahead and, you know, look for anything that may, you know, look unsafe and they bring that to the contractor's attention.
So our project managers take on the responsibility of ensuring our safety, all of our safety measures for this type of work? That's their role?
It is part of their role as they do their observations.
Mrs. James.
I wonder if this might be a gap in our design and construction setup in the sense that it seems that safety on these types of projects is really important and I just wonder if that might be a gap. We might want to look at doing something about.
Mr. Rice.
So, Mr. Perez, well, Bass Construction, during the construction of the Ag barn, they're responsible for means and methods of construction and safety procedures. OSHA required safety procedures on the site. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. And they also submit to us a safety plan that we go ahead and approve.
Okay, so then when our staff, our project manager goes on site, they're not, their primary job is not looking at safety. Their primary job is looking at the progress of construction and so forth. But if they notice safety issues, they'll bring them to the attention of the contractor, will they not?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
So is this site, it's between, I think we did a land swap right next to Travis High School, didn't we?
Yes, sir.
So is this occupied by children or students at Travis or is it isolated from the high school?
It is isolated.
Okay, so it's pretty safe where it is? I mean, they've got a construction fence and everything around it?
There's not one presently, but there will be one once we get them on site, yes, sir.
Part of their, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mr. Burdine? Do you have anything? Okay, thank you. Moving on to 6A3. Classrooms at Oyster Creek and Santa Cruz.
It's not necessary to read the full recommendation. I would just kind of explain it to the board in general.
What I'd like to do before we get into these particular projects is I'd like to go ahead and go over two particular slides. The first one that we're looking at here is just a condensed Exhibit A. And Exhibit A is the document that we have been providing. Each time we bring an item for your approval and a budget for your approval, at the back of the memo that we submit, we have what we call Exhibit A. And it basically is a running total based on what y'all are approving and whether we are either giving money or we're taking money from contingency. And so when you look at this slide, the main thing we want to see here is that as of Bid Package 13, which is the last bid package that was board-approved, we still have in our cumulative contingency a little over $6 million at this point. Now, as we go through tonight and different things get approved, then that number will be adjusted. And I'll be able to show that, you know, as I speak about the individual items shortly. The second slide is our Phase 1 budget status report. And what this does is, whenever we go ahead and we come in and we have y'all approve a project budget, then we use that information to go ahead and, first of all, populate the slide that I just showed you, which was Exhibit A, and then secondly, to populate this slide, which is our forecast of where we feel that we're going to be. And what this slide is showing you is that, right now, for new construction in Phase 1, we have everything with actuals in there other than, and the reason we still show estimate is that we have FFE and we have technology that will be procured out of that project budget that y'all have approved. But it's still, at this point, an estimate that we have in there and it's a placeholder. And what that line is showing, if you go all the way out to the right to the total, is it's showing that if we maintain that and we don't exceed those estimated budgets for FFE and technology, then we will be zeroing out as far as Phase 1. As you go to the addition comparison, it's the same manner except that in this particular case, what we have right now based on the actuals and the estimates is that we're showing that we actually have a shortage there. We're going to need to put some money into this. And then going on to life cycle and deficient comparison, what we're showing there is, and this is all based on estimates at this point, there's, well, there's some actual, but it's very small, most of it is estimate. But what we're showing is, we're estimating that at the end of Phase 1 and 2, we're going to be $4 point million to the good on this particular, as we look at this. So as we go forward a little bit, you're going to see some decrease in our Exhibit A and where we are in project contingency. But what we're showing here is that as we project this out based on the information we're bringing you, we see that then it's going to come down and then we project it to go back up. And we still, at this point, are not tracking the Phase 3 because we're just at the point that we're starting to bring the architects on board for that. We've given them letters of intent, but we don't have them under contract. So once we do that and they start providing us budgets and everything, then we'll start populating this and take it from there. And then this is a fluid item. It's a living document. And, you know, as more things become actual, you know, it gets adjusted. But this is the best tool that we have to be able to feel comfortable as we're bringing projects to you. projects to you. Uh, so I'll answer any other questions you may have about these two slides before I move forward.
So just to make sure that I understand, on Slide One, you're showing 6.4 million currently of contingency.
And, and that is before we come to you with projects tonight that will be approved next Monday.
Okay, so this will go down, based on, this will go down?
Correct.
But ultimately, you are estimating that at the end of Phase Two, end of Phase One and Phase Two, that we will be 4.1 million, uh, we'll have a 4.1 million surplus?
In, in our contingency.
In our contingency.
And that is, that is based on the assumption that you approve the project budgets that we're bringing to you, which is going to draw it down, and then as we move forward, we're, we're projecting that it's going to go back up.
Okay, and you, and we, we don't have any estimates for Phase Three at this time?
Not at this point.
Okay, just want to make sure I understood. Are, are there questions by the board, Mr. Rosenthal?
Just to continue with that, so the 6.7 million that you're showing is a difference, now where you were, there you go.
Mm-hmm. The shortage.
For the shortage of the, for the additions, um, is that, that's included in that 4.1?
Uh, yes, sir, it's, it, uh, well, actually, it is, it is not included in the 4.1. The 4.1 is the, the projection once we bring in the life cycle deficiency.
Okay, right, but, but it's in, yeah.
Yes, sir, it is.
You're, you're counting for it.
Correct, we are.
Okay, but if, at this point in time, okay, we are up 6 point something?
6.4.
And now because with these new things that you're bringing us, we're actually down, so we're kind of evenish, maybe a little, right?
We're, what, what you'll see here shortly is that, uh, if you approve all of the projects, it's going to bring this 6.4 down to about 5 million, I mean, uh, 500, uh, thousand.
Right.
And then we're saying, but with the projections that we have here, we're gonna, you know, bring it back up.
But a snapshot as of approval of this stuff next week, should all this get approved, then we're within 500,000.
Yes, sir.
Got it.
Mrs. James?
Let me just ask a clarifying question to Mr. Rosenthal's question. So, uh, Ms. Perez, what you're saying is that all of these projects that are in the 2014 bond are, ha, are in sum about $6 million over budget?
No.
Let me, let me take a stab at that. I mean, what, for the, for the new construction that we have in Phase One and Phase Two, we think we're going to be breaking even. For the additions that are in Phase One and Phase Two, we're going to be down 6.7, but we think that that's going to be made up by the, by the renovations, the, the life cycle and deficiency comparisons that we have already scoped out through the work with the architects and the engineers for Phase One and Phase Two. This doesn't include, this estimate doesn't include any of the Phase Three work that is just, that we're just now getting with the architects on.
Okay, I think, I think you might have misunderstood my question. If you look at Slide One, our current status is 6,400 something thousand, the other slide, not this, the other slide one, there you go. 600, 6.4 million, okay? And what I thought I heard him say was that at, if these projects that are on our agenda right now were to be approved, they're using 5 point something million of that 6.4. And so it's, they're roughly over budget, $6 million, maybe a little bit less, which is going to draw our cumulative program contingency down to the $500,000 range?
Yes, ma'am.
Whatever, okay, so that's, so I understand that.
Mr. Rice?
Well, I think Mrs. James.
Are you not, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, then I just had another question. It's, when I compared these projects, which is, I, I guess I don't have any more questions on this, so I have questions more specifically on the particular projects.
Okay, so, Mr. Rice? No? Okay, we'll move on to the particular projects.
All right, so we'll, yes, we're... So with that said, then we'll, we'll move on to, uh, the bid packages, which will be Bid Package Eight, Bid Package Ten, and Bid Package Eleven. And, uh, on, just to kind of give you all just a high-level synopsis on this, on the, on the additions for each one of these, these basically were additions that are, for the most part prototypes. In other words, the, the, we took the schools that were pretty much mirror images of each other, and other than, than, uh, the, um, uh, cornerstone, which is a 12 classroom, all of them are just 10 classroom additions, all of these based on the, uh, proposals that we received are coming in at, uh, about around 214 to 229 dollars a square foot is where, where these are, were coming in. Uh, cornerstone, which is a 12, came in at about 195 dollars a square foot. Part of the reason that we, you know, we spoke about being over budget by the 6 million, part of the reason that they came in higher was, first of all, when we first budgeted these, uh, when we went out for the bond, we were not looking at, uh, the 21st Century. We've brought that in, so that increased, and there was some additional square footage that came into play by some of the flex spaces and, and the different things that we had to do there. But then also in addition to that, there was the code requirements that, that happened to us, and on, on a numerous campuses, we had to go in and do fire, uh, uh, actual fire lanes to get back to them to be able to, to get these permitted. So those were costs that, uh, it appeared were not originally in the budget. And so that's some of where this increase came in. Uh, another thing is that we ended up, uh, where these additions are now situated, they're, in some cases were playgrounds, which have to be removed and then have to be relocated and set back up. Those were some of the additional cost. So with, with that said, it, uh, we're, we feel that we've received some good budget numbers on this. The one thing that has occurred once again from the, uh, time that we submitted this to, uh, actually this past, uh, Friday, was that we received notification that, uh, Prime Contractors was going to pull out from Bid Package Eleven. And so what that means is that we, uh, had to send notification to them, uh, you know, terminating any, um, any of the negotiations that we had, and then we have to go back to the second, uh, apparent low proposer and negotiate with them, and we would want to go ahead and bring that back. So there, there would have to be a change here because Prime has, has already let us know that they, they felt that, uh, they did not have the proper personnel, uh, to, to be able to deliver as they felt as a company they could deliver, and definitely they, they felt that they were not going to be able to deliver to, to Fort Bend ISD standard. And so, you know, those things happen at times, uh, but we, we feel that we have a good second proposer. Uh, the original bid was approximately 200,000, uh, more than, than, uh, Prime. That's before any type of negotiation. So we feel, even though it's, it's a hiccup, we feel comfortable that we can come back to you with a, um, good contractor.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Mrs. James?
Do you feel like you'll be bringing that next week, or is that some, is that for next month, or do you have any, I guess you guys really can't tell at this point?
We would, uh, like to do everything that we can to bring it next week. Uh, these projects are slated to be finished, uh, for the beginning of the school year, and, uh, even though we do have a little bit afloat, and, and if we needed to, we could come in September on this particular project, but if they're, you know, we're going to try everything we can to, to bring it, uh, for Monday.
So could you just clarify a little on the timeline on these projects? Then they're starting soon and, but could you clarify the timeline, please?
We would go ahead and, uh, sign contracts, uh, right after board approval, and then give issue notice to proceed, and then the work would commence, uh, on the additions. The portables and all have already been moved out of the way, so they're no longer in the way. The contractor can go ahead and move forward and get started.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Any other questions on bid packages eight, ten, or eleven?
I have another question then.
Mrs. James?
And it had to do with, I didn't, I wasn't quick enough. You said the cost per square footage, but I missed it. You said on the cornerstone, it was 195 per square foot, and then the others ranged, what was the range?
They, they ranged from, uh, approximately 214 to 229.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. I think we're ready to move on to Item 6B, which is review of proposed revisions to EG Local. Dr. Dupree?
Yes, actually, um, Cynthia's still here somewhere, and Dr. Hill. Cynthia and, um, Cynthia Rincon are general counsel, and Dr. Phyllis Hill has worked on this. I would point out, we've provided you an updated version of the policy based on some feedback previously received by the board earlier today, and Jane has the, um, current, most current version that'll be on the board on the screen, um, during the discussion. At this point, I think, um, we're, we're really ready for the, we're ready to engage with the board's questions.
Okay. Do we have questions from the board, EG Local? I know we do. Mrs. James?
All right. I, let me find the most up-to-date version here. I, I, um, I looked at this quite a lot, and I was trying to understand what, um, you know, what, what we're kind of going for here. I like the concept of, um, using the term philosophy, um, and I think that that was good, but then I started thinking about, is this a curriculum philosophy? Is this a curriculum development philosophy? Is this a philosophy about delivering curriculum? And it, and that's in a high-level way, I started sort of getting, um, I guess distracted because I was really just trying to figure out what are we, what are we trying to do with this policy? And I think one of the things that really, um, kind of, I don't, won't say bothered me, but it sort of got me thinking is, um, what... We're working really hard on developing our curriculum, and, and it's now at a point in time, but have we looked ahead to think about what curriculum should look like in five years or 10 years? And if this policy's about curriculum development, then it sort of got me thinking we should be either broader or forward-thinking in having our conversation about it. I know that gets us way off the track of what's written on this piece of paper, but I guess that's where, that's kind of where I'm coming from in this, um, in this conversation. So, um, I don't know if anybody wants to comment on that, and then I, I had some...
So I think it would, it's important to share a little bit of the history of this policy. This policy actually comes out of the work that the board did with CRSS, and that is where this, um, the basis of this policy is coming from. So we're actually working to get a better understanding now, um, having lived with this policy for about a year, of what the board envisions this policy to mean. So those, those are good questions because we too probably have the same types of questions. But I think it's important for, for the board to know that that's where this came from, from the work with CRSS. So then we've gone back and tried to, um, in listening to the questions that we've received from the board, and in working, in all the work that the board has done on other policies, and in listening to the concerns about curriculum and, and curriculum development, we've gone back and tried to clarify a lot of the terms that were used, and tried to make them to fit in what we're doing as a district and, and what we think the board is, is, uh, sharing with us when they ask, with the questions that you have and things like that. So that's just a little history piece of this.
Okay, and I think that is good, and I agree that it is, that is the history, and it's, we're, you know, we're sort of a work in progress, right? We've said we're building the airplane as we're flying around. So we're, so we, we, you know, and now we're kind of going back through and we're trying to refine, um, trying to refine things. And I think a lot of the additions here, I know we talked about this a couple of months ago, we put in some additions, and I think, uh, even more of the additions that are here help to integrate other of, of our policies into this policy. So from that standpoint, um, so from that standpoint, I like it. I guess what is frankly throwing me for a loop, and I didn't have an opportunity to do enough homework on this, but just the title, curriculum development, causes me to wonder, is this really the, is this really curriculum develop, the policy that guides curriculum development? Or is this... Is it, is it curriculum, or is it, is it really two, couple of different ideas that we've sort of morphed into one policy, and we're just using that title as a placeholder? So that might be a little bit of a deep question, but it, it is one that I'm pondering because I'm not, I'm not totally comfortable with all these pieces and how they fit together. If I could, let me ask a question. We took out the language about curriculum framework. Was that, is that, where did that terminology come from? Is that something that's in the law, or was it a term that we just used or borrowed from another district at some time?
I think it was really, curriculum framework is, is only referenced, I think, once in the Texas Education Code, but I think this came from borrowed language out of the work with CRSS. When I went back and looked at several other districts, there, there aren't many districts that have this work in EG Local, um, but there are districts that we can tell the boards did similar work, and that's where we changed to philosophy because we did feel like the board was trying to, um, provide the philosophy about curriculum and not really... The, the word framework was throwing everyone off, I think, because there is a piece to the curriculum that's a, that's a framework, and I, I would defer to Dr. Hill and, and Dr. Faust on that.
Legal EHAA refers to, uh, state curriculum frameworks. And also, when we had our curriculum audit with TASSA, they referred to, uh, frameworks of curriculum that included goals and objectives, and that's the way our curriculum is arranged with learning objectives. And so when we began to work with the policy that you had worked on in your retreat, we were interweaving the state's legal document, the audit document, and trying to, to also address that we were going to have a framework for continuous renewal, development, revision of the curriculum, because that was one of the things that the audit committee didn't feel like we had strong policies around the governance piece, the organizational structure. Remember, we, we did the organizational chart and a curriculum management plan that was really a living document that would guide our work in years to come. And also, they cited that we needed stronger planning processes, which we've been working on. There were like nine recommendations that we detailed for you in December as progress, a progress monitoring report. a progress monitoring report. But that's where curriculum framework came, both from the state's document and the audit report.
Okay, and that's kind of where we ended the conversation previously, because we were saying, well, it says in the policy we're supposed to approve it. We don't even know what it is, and we couldn't really identify it. So I think that's appropriate, then, that it's, that language is taken out, because it doesn't seem like something that the board should approve. But then when I read this, when I read this as it exists right now in this draft form, I was concerned, because I didn't see where the board was involved in approving curriculum goals or philosophy, or, and that that was an up, and how that would be an ongoing process. Because it's one thing to approve a philosophy like this that's, as it's written up there, that's quite general and aligns with our core beliefs. But it's another one, another thing to have that sort of be in a place where it can be, where it can evolve, and where the board can give regular input to it. I, and I think, again, this is where our conversation derailed last time, because we talked about a curriculum plan that came to the board. But again, that wasn't approved by the board, it was just presented. And so when I look at this policy, and I think about curriculum development, I feel like somewhere in here we need to have a mechanism for the board's input into whether we call it a philosophy, or whether we call it goals or something. And I'm, and I'm looking, I'm trying to figure out where that fits. I mean, obviously, it fits in the part that says the board's, the board's part of the, you know, the board's responsibilities. But what do we call that, and where does, where does that exist now?
This is James. I, I'm going to speak, and Cynthia and Phyllis, you can tell me if I'm on the right path. I think what you are describing is what we're attempting to do with this policy. Because ultimately, the board's job is to adopt policy. And that policy can be whatever you want it to be. And if it needs specific goals, if it's got the things you're looking for, then we, I think we, we've been operating from the assumption it would be here. And then that's our marching orders of staff, to go write curriculum and teach curriculum based on the board's expectations. So I, my view is that all the things you're describing are what we need, what we need the board's guidance on what to put in here. And then that directs us going forward. And this, of course, is a living document, to the extent the board is always able to change it whenever they want to adopt changes to it. I mean, does that, does, I mean, does that, what do you, what does that sound like?
Yeah, I think that sounds, that sounds okay. But I also feel like there needs to be a mechanism for, that comes back to the board every, I don't know what the time period is. But if the mechanism is in the policy, then the review of the goals or the philosophy, it, it allows it to become a conversation topic. If we don't put the mechanism in the policy, then we get, you know, swamped with everything else, and we forget that, yes, it should come from policy.
So maybe we could clarify on the section?
Hold a second, hold a second. The way, what I'm closely relating to and what you're describing is what we've done with our annual enrollment review.
Right.
So you've put in policy that every year, we'll have our demographic study, and we will come to the board in January. And that's written in policy to share how we're going to address growth for that year. And so I'm almost seeing, I think this where Cynthia is going, almost a mechanism in this policy that, it's because basically what you're asking for is a policy review. So it's the, and it could be more specific to say annually, or every, you know, biannually, however you, often the board chooses to say it. It will, this will be brought forward for review to affirm change, or whatever, the goals, objectives of the curriculum. But that trigger, the timeframe trigger, would be written in here within the same policy review reviewing.
Yeah.
And there is the expectation that the superintendent would annually provide to the board an oversight report of the implementation of the district curriculum aligned to their curriculum management plan. So in that report, it's the expectation that the, the administration would provide information regarding the implementation, would provide information. And that would give the board the opportunity to have discussion about the curriculum management plan, about the implementation, the instructional resources being used, and the policy itself.
What page, what page is that on?
That's on page five of seven.
Yeah, and I would say, if that's how we're going to do it, then it should, we should add a phrase in that section that indicates that the policy would be brought forward at the same time the oversight report was brought forward. And, and then I'll just emphasize again, then this is a curriculum development policy. And it's not a, it's not other things. It's a curriculum development policy. Maybe it's a, maybe it's an implementation policy, because we've got some parts of it are implementation, especially when we start talking about teachers and administrators. So I don't know if these two things need to be separated out in some way, or, or we need to change the title.
Give it a different title.
Yeah, the first few pages, it's more of a, sorry.
Go ahead.
It was more of a, to me, definitely philosophy. And then, because I was getting confused too. I mean, towards the end, it talks more of a directive and, and how to implement this. Because that's what I was concerned with, is really, how does this philosophy then move into the actual curriculum delivery? And I was trying to figure out where, where the pieces connected there. So if this is, if this is the philosophy, where's the? Where, where's the actual? Implementation plan?
So, so I think you're talking about the curriculum management plan.
Curriculum management plan.
Okay.
And it does, in the legal document, legal EHAA states that before the adoption of a major curriculum initiative, including the use of a curriculum management system, the district must use a process that, and it outlines then a three-step process. I think some of the things that we're talking about, some are in the board's EA Local that was developed a couple of years ago. I think some are in EHAA Legal, which are very explicit and detailed. And certainly, this is, this is your local policy. And we want you to be pleased with it, and it to function in the way you want it to function. But the curriculum management plan is the nuts and bolts of the, the processes, the timelines. And, and it's, it's much longer and detailed in the actual implementation.
Yes, ma'am, I have a copy of that in the briefcase sitting on the floor next to me. And it is much longer. And we don't want, we don't need that level of detail in the policy. And we certainly don't, that level of detail should, I don't believe, should be subject to board action. But I, but we do need the board footprint on it. And we do need, you know, kind of the headliners on it. So just like many of the, many of the plans that you, that all of you have brought to us have come out of the core beliefs and commitment statements, this is the same type of thing. But I think what, what past history and may, and what we're kind of leaning towards is something that's a little more defined philosophy that helps to headline and guide what, what our intentions are. So I, I think we're on the right track. I just think, I'm not sure what the, I'm not sure exactly what the tweaks are that we need to do to, to make it work.
Mr. Rosenthal?
I agree, I think we are on the right track. I agree with what you guys are saying. To me, I think that the philosophy is kind of part of this. Maybe like the opening paragraph is what the board believes as far as development of curriculum. And just, you know, we've had several examples over the past year or two where we've sat up there and had discussions about resources, and, you know, whether the system's working, or whether it's not working. We, we, I actually watched that video a few weeks ago, and that went on for about an hour and a half. And then, you know, I brought up something of, you know, a month ago or so, where, you know, we talked about the teaks. You know, is how, how broad, you know, does the board think that, that, that we should go? No, I, I don't know if, if that's part of what we, when we talk about philosophy. I don't know if that's what we're talking about. But I think that we should all kind of have an understanding, you know, of, and, and kind of an agreement. And, you know, have those discussions in a, in a separate workshop. I hate to ask for another meeting, but, and really kind of flush that stuff out.
Well, so I'm making, making some notes here. And it, it sounds like, I mean, one of the things I'm hearing, and actually, this was, this would have been my perspective as well, is I like having the philosophy in here. And I, I agree with some of the things that are in here, but I'm not sure that the board has had that conversation in order. Because it, to me, a philosophy is a what-do-we-believe statement.
But we've had, we've had it, but it's been bits and pieces, and it hasn't really all been compiled.
And so perhaps, perhaps we need a workshop, we need, we need a workshop on this particular policy.
I would agree. I would, I would like to interject, though. I mean, I think the board had rich conversation around this when they wrote it three years ago. Because remember, that was a whole series of work. But I don't know that everyone, currently not everybody on the board was on the board at that time yet.
Right.
And so I do think, you know, it kind of comes back to, Mrs. James, what you've been saying. It needs revisiting by the board on a regular basis. And I think that's what I'm hearing, is that concern, we need to revisit it now to make sure it reflects the current views of the board.
Well, and I think we need to be sure that this particular policy is focused on what we want it to be focused on. Because, you know, when you look at the title, it does talk about development, but it also talks about delivery. And so if, if that's what this policy's going to be, then it, it needs to reflect that. And probably in a little more organized way, where if we do start with our philosophy, and we talk about what the board believes, and then we can detail that out, and this is how development is going to stem from that. And then this is how delivery's going to stem from that. And this is how assessment's going to stem from that. So it gives, makes, you know, it's what I'm hearing, is that we, I think we need to maybe get consensus on that, and then maybe organize this policy a little bit better, so that we're all in agreement on what, what marching orders we're giving. Does that sound good? We agree with that?
Yes, and I will say that I, excuse me for jumping in again. I think that, I think that, I remember as we were going through some of the other policies, and I think in this, maybe in this section, but we kind of got to, through a phase, we were like, we need a philosophy about this. We need a philosophy about this. We need a whole section of philosophies. But, but maybe this can be sort of a, kind of a state leaping off point. Because I think assessment was one of the things we talked about having a philosophy around. So if we either put that in this policy, or we have a workshop about this and spring, spring off of that into the assessment, then we, then we, you know, I think, that would be pretty awesome, because for the people that are working on the curriculum revisions, if they've got some good guidance on what the philosophy is, where, what our priorities are and what the philosophy is, then I think it directs and makes the work much, much more clear. Instead of what I sensed here in reading this, and just overall, was kind of a tug-of-war between the teaks, the thousands of teaks, and the, but we also want to teach critical thinking. And, and this whole, I really did sense kind of a tug-of-war. So I think it would be some good conversation.
Well, and since teaching and learning are our core business, I think it's going to be important that we get this right. And we'll probably drive some of the strategic planning that we're doing over the next year, so. Okay, will you?
Well, I'd like to clarify then that we will not bring this forward for approval next week. But I also would like to ask that we really make this a high priority, because two of the board's priorities for the coming year are linked directly to this. And so we need this done as soon as we can, so that, so we can move along with our, our work.
So we can, we can work together to pick a time that's, that's agreeable to the board,
I'm good.
to staff to get together and do this as quickly as possible. But?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I had typed a lot of questions, some around language things, but some again around this sort of general philosophy thing. And I think I copied, well, I copied Mrs. Martinez. So at least you have that in the, you know, background there.
Okay, we will move on then to six C, which has several proposed agreements and memoranda. One being between Fort Ben ISD and Morton County Junior College for the Ridgemont Early Childhood Center Literacy Program. Do we have a presentation, no presentation on these? Okay, do we have questions from the board on C one? Hearing none, moving on. C two is between Fort Ben ISD and Big Brothers and Big Sisters from Marshall High School. Do we have questions from the board?
I have a question.
Mrs. James? Okay. Maybe forty-nine.
I hope we never get that long.
Forty-nine. Turn your, turn your microphone on.
I'm glad it wasn't recorded. Okay, so I really like this idea, because I like the kind of, the intentionality of it. Do we, was there any estimation of the number of students that we would be trying to serve? Or we would, you know, we would like to serve, or that we'd be targeting at this point?
The counselors at Missouri City Middle School were responsible for recommending the students who would participate. And they recommended twenty students who were, are rising ninth graders. So far, they have twelve approved Big Brothers, Big Sisters. So it's not looking like they're going to come up with the full twenty. They indicate that they think fifteen may be a more realistic number for this first year. But they're very excited about it. They feel like there's a good process to match students with the mentors.
And what are our obligations on the, in this partnership?
To help with the matching and provide the space. They will have the meetings at the campus. And we are scheduling so that it doesn't take away from class time. It's before school, after school, at lunch, and so forth.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Hellerger?
Just a quick question. So is, for this particular program, since we don't have the twenty, if there, is there a certain application that we can work with Big Brothers and Big Sisters for those who want to support the school, the district with this particular initiative?
You could get in touch with Pamela Shaw, and she could help direct you to that source if you might have some additional mentors that would be interested.
Okay, all right. So are we working with the community on this? This is still one of those opportunities, I think, that we should be reaching out to our community leaders to get the support for this.
We are. One of the reasons we're working with Big Brothers and Big Sisters is because they're a well-known entity, and they've got all of the mechanisms in place to do the vetting. And so we can certainly refer folks to them, but they're also, they've got a full team dedicated to work recruiting. So I, I consider our partnership with them an extension into the community. Because that, that's why we're not having to build our own, our own programming.
Yeah, I understand that. So one of the things that I'm trying to help us understand, and I'm not sure that we do on all cases, I'll put it that way, is that we've got, I know churches and communities around these areas that have not been tapped, have not been asked to support these initiatives that we have, to support those schools right there in the community. And that's what I'm referring. And that's what I'm referring to. So if you've got five slots or six slots that are um, empty for Big Brothers, Big Sisters, let's contact those churches or whomever in organizations to say, hey, can you all have people come out? Call Pamela Shaw at this number, have a flyer out there and says, we're looking for, for adults to support the Big Brother/Sister Program with um, Marshall High School. I don't think we do enough of that. And, and it's every time we talk about this, I'm, I'm a little frustrated because we always have these gaps. We don't have enough of this, we don't have enough of that. But when I talk to people, I, I go to churches and visit churches on a regular basis. I don't see anything in their community bulletins. I don't see anything on their, in, in their programs. I don't see it. And I don't hear it. So I really want us to do, I really, you know, we say we're reaching out to the community. I just don't know how we're doing it. I really need for us to find five, six people to finish this program out.
I, I would agree with that. Cause has this been publicized anywhere on the website or anything?
Everything goes through a Big Brother, Big Sister organization for this particular program. They do, they run the whole show.
Right, but, but can't we, can't we, yeah, I mean, if we're partnering with them, I mean, I would think, cause this is, I mean, seeing this memo, this is the first I've heard of it, you know? And it, you can reach out to all communities, not just right around the area. I mean, there's probably lots of people. I mean, I was a Big Brother many, many years ago, you know, and it's a great program. And um, there's probably a lot of people that would say, hmm, never thought about that. Or I've heard about it, that would be interested in doing it, whether they're in that area or they're not in that area. So. Um, I really do, I, I agree. I think we really need to get the word out and.
And I'm honestly not certain how extensive the matching process and so forth is. You've been in the program.
It was, well, it was, shoot, geez, twenty years ago or so, twenty-five years ago. It's pretty, it's pretty intense. It is. Um, but um, I mean.
But I think Ms. Hellerger is right. I'm sure there are people in our community who, given the need, would volunteer or be interested. And I'll share that with.
Can we, it sounds, can we get you guys to give us an update on that and how we're gonna uh, reach out to the community and try to fill those slots? Cause my, that was my first thought is it's five people. I think we could find five. Can you guys let us know how we as a district can?
We can do that.
Look into filling it. Thank you. Okay, C three, agreement between Fort Bend and Texas Women's University Dietetic Internship. Do we have questions on C three? Alright, C four, agreement between Fort Bend ISD and the University of North Florida's Brooks College of Health regarding acceptance of dietetic interns. Mrs. James?
I just have a comment that I know we've had a couple of more of these come to us last month or maybe the month before. And I just appreciate the partnerships we're building with a variety of institutions to get, you know, new people, new ideas, and new information into our school system. And I, I value that a lot. So thanks to the people who are getting out there and making these connections. Cause I think it, it will make a difference for our children.
Thank you, Mrs. James.
I wanted to add to that and say, I, I like the fact that we're actually going out of the Houston area as well. There's lots of fine learning institutions all over the state and it's just refreshing to see, so.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. Alright, C five, agreement between Fort Bend ISD and Fort Bend County regarding Saved by the Bell. Do we have questions on this? Mrs. James?
Well, we kind of talked about it before and um, and I guess what this is, is, is we're making a commitment for, of two hundred and forty thousand dollars for the caseworkers. And I think that Dr. Whitbeck, you were saying earlier, and maybe Dr. Carlson as well, that this is adding value to our students. In terms of helping them and um, doing home visits and, and providing, and helping identify needs of our students. And so um, for that reason, I think that it's, I think that it's good in the sense that I, from what I understand is it's helping with our, with our tru- it's helping our truant students. So I guess that's my, I guess that's a comment. My, my question that I'd actually written down was, you know, what's this investment getting us? And I guess, you know, you sort of answered that in the sense that it's, it's catching a hundred and twenty-five students that may be and, and, and meeting their needs, I think was the number. Um, and so there you go, right?
There were like four hundred and seventy-five, I think, home visits, over a thousand different counseling sessions. So quite a lot of boots on the ground is how I would describe their assistance at this point and being more proactive than reactive.
Yeah, and I think some support of our administrative staff as well in terms of beyond campus. I've seen these folks on campuses, meeting with students and, and um, being involved in, in their, in their lives, really.
Yes.
Okay?
Thank you, Mrs. James. Alright, C six, memorandum of agreement between Fort Bend and the School Psychology Program at Our Lady of the Lake. Do we have questions on this? Alright, moving on to C seven, agreement between Fort Bend and the School Psychology Program at Trinity University. Questions on this? C eight, agreement between Fort Bend and the School Psychology Program of the University of Texas at San Antonio. We're getting around, getting around. It is good. And finally, C nine, agreement between Fort Bend and Synacor Foundation regarding provision of substance abuse treatment for adolescents at Ferndale Henry. Do we have questions on this agreement? Mrs. James?
I don't have a question, but I do, I was asked, you can't get away from school district business even when you go on vacation. I was asked if, by a friend of mine, if we had applied for any SAMSA grants, which are around this same sort of topic, substance abuse. And they're more commi- from what I could understand from her, community-based. And involve a lot of coordination between um, organizations in the community. And it made me think of our community because we do such a good job networking between organizations, so. I'm just throwing that out there. It's not something I've seen before, but it might be something we might want to look at if um, if we're looking for uh, intervention. There was substance abuse and also um, mental health, um, mental health money available when I looked at the website. And I thought that's an area where we need to bolster our, um, maybe our services to kids also. So, and that was just an idea.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Alright, D, we get to talk about WADA and our chapter forty-one status. Assume that's you, Mr. Basset. Do we have questions? Yeah. Mr. Rice?
Yes, thank you. So, Mr. Basset, we've, we've reached a point where, I'm losing my power. We, we've got five options, none of which are very attractive except for option number three, purchase attendance credits. And so what does that look like? How much does that cost us to, to purchase attendance credits? And then the flip side is we won't lose any funding.
No, I mean, there's no, there's no cost associated with, with this option. I mean, in a way, it's, it's really a, a formality. I mean, we're, we're above three hundred and nineteen thousand per WADA, per weighted average. Daily attendance. And so we're far, far below the recapture level where we would actually have to pay any funding back to the state. That level is at five hundred and four thousand per WADA. So I mean, we have many, many years, you know, before we would get there. But there isn't a, a cost associated with us choosing option three. There's a number of districts that are in our, our boat where we're technically a chapter forty-one district, but we're, but we're well below the, the recapture level.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, for clarifying that. Any other questions on this? Alright, six E, items regarding district taxes. Number one is setting the date, time, and place to conduct a public meeting to receive information, comments, and taxpayers' views on the twenty sixteen school district tax rates. Yes, sir. Dr. Dupree?
Well, this is an item, as you recall, when you adopted the budget, we discussed what the tax rate might be for the coming school year. And it will be necessary to conduct a hearing if we want to keep the rate at thirty cents as opposed to considering the twenty-eight cent rate discussed during the budget process. So Steve's going to kind of talk about that this evening and again, along with some other ideas.
Alright, thank you, sir. Okay, so I did, what we'll go through some of the news and highlights. I've already gone through most of that. Talk a little bit about debt service because again, this is, this is impacting the debt service fund. A little bit on property values and our tax rate, and then what the next steps would be. So I did roll through this slide. What I skipped over was some of the information on the remarketing and the refunding. But I have some specific slides on that that I'll show you here in a minute. But the, this slide is from the, a repeat from the first presentation. So just so you can see graphically, oil, you know, is definitely went lower, went below forty for the first time in a while. And so, you know, we're, we're always looking at that because of the impact that it has on the state budget. So, you know, it's not just the, the locally, but also on the, on the state budget. If you look, it's been a few months since I've showed you this slide. So this is the sales tax trending for the state overall, not, not locally. This is for the state overall. And so if you look at the, the trend back in, what was it, two thousand and nine, before the large funding crisis of the state, you can see that the, the slope wasn't too, too bad the first part of the year, but then it really went down the second half of that year. I don't know if that's going to happen again. It would have to take us down to here, but, but it, but this isn't great in terms of the first part of the year. And so we, we really have to keep an eye on this going into this coming session. But, but this kind of information doesn't really make me optimistic with regard to what's happening from a state funding perspective. And that's why we're on our compensation recommendation. It's more along the lines of, of the one-time supplement as opposed to ongoing salary increases. Uh, on the good news, we did have a refunding on the debt service that we, we did. So again, what a refunding is, is basically if you have a mortgage and, and you, you want to refinance your mortgage. So we had a number of bonds that um, that were going to be, that were issued in two thousand and six. They had a call date in two thousand and sixteen. Uh, but you can see we were paying interest with coupons between three point five percent and five percent over that time. We have, whenever we did the, the refunding, our true interest cost for the seventy million that was, that was reissued is just under one point nine percent. And you can see those maturities ranging from twenty seventeen through twenty, twenty-six. But really happy with that, uh, true interest cost. And so our net present value savings was, was over fifteen million. Part of that was just, you know, being patient and, and waiting. I mean, you know, the underwriters really, you know, they get paid when we do transactions. But uh, these numbers look better when we wait. And so I like to wait. Uh, but uh, having that percentage, you know, is very strong, but, but fifteen point one million was, was a good result. What was even more exciting was the remarketing we did. So, so this was the first variable rate transaction that we had. The uh, the fifteen, twenty fifteen A, the, the original fifty million. And what we had outstanding was thirty-three million. And so with the original, nothing was changed with regard to the bond order, but our original pricing date was going to be July twelfth. And so um, we were just keeping an eye on the market, but because of everything that happened with Brexit and, and the rest of the bond market, we did move up the timetable by five days. And we, we were very fortunate that we hit, that we went to the market in time where, where supply, not only were things, you know, it was turbulent throughout the, the world, but supply of new money issues coming in was very low, which was good for us. And so it, it's just amazing for us to be able to say, we borrowed thirty-three million for two years at point nine. You know, so less than one percent. And so in comparison to our two-year note from the prior year, that was almost a seven hundred thousand dollar savings in debts, in uh, interest costs. So that's pretty good. Plus the, the step rate was lower, which is a bonus. I mean, we don't ever see the step rate ever happening. That's if we can't remarket something. I think that the only time that would happen, it was back in the Lehman crisis in two thousand and eight, but they still look at that. But we're pretty excited about the remarketing and how that turned out.
So that's, that's now fixed for two years at point nine?
Two years, two years at point nine. So pretty, pretty exciting. Uh, exciting for us. I mean, you know, other people think, other things are exciting. We get excited about this. We're a bit strange that way, sorry. Okay, so the, the, the point of this, the po- the point of this is just to remind everybody, if you could look at the bottom right, we still have four hundred and forty-seven million in, in outstanding, you know, authorized but unissued debt. And so, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to keep that out. I mean, we don't have to start paying debt until we issue. And so this is why, you know, we're going to get into the commercial paper program. We'll be bringing that to you all next month. Uh, but, but you can see we have a lot of activity, a lot's going on. And we're being able to manage it with the funds that we have, we have issued so far. Uh, but our debt structure is very positive. You know, again, within twenty years, almost ninety-eight percent of our debt's going to mature within twenty years. So we have plenty of capacity in the out years, you know, for whenever phase two comes along. But we went into, we went through this in great detail with the bond oversight committee earlier. So it was, it was very well received. We have a, you know, other, other, you know, bullets in our holster with regard to other refundings that are going to be coming. There, the next one won't be until this, to do it on a current basis, wouldn't be until the summer of twenty eighteen. Now, if the market does stay the way it is now into next year, I may consider an advance refunding for the first time in a while. And that's because that the negative arbitrage, well, we'll still have some. To be able to refund a hundred and fifty-nine million at the rates that we have now, it, it might be worth it. So we'll be talking about that next summer. And uh, so, but there's nothing, there are people that want us to do that now. Uh, well, the, I don't have the maturity, I don't have the, the coupons, but four, they're, they're going to be, you know, fours and fives. Okay, the, the coupons for those. And so we would definitely save money, but the, but the negative arbitrage is, is almost four million dollars. And I don't want to, I don't want to eat that right now. So anyway, there's a, a lot, we're always looking at this. And these are the, you know, some of the things we do to help manage our debt. Okay, so you got the I chart. So you really got to look at the, the single page ones that you, that you have. But I, I've been through these charts before with you to show you the, you know, what, what the columns are. But the, 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 the main thing here is that we had this existing debt service. You can see the, the result of the uh, the refunding that we did and the variable rate coming into here. So that's, you know, that, that's in place here. Uh, we are going to start issuing the commercial paper after, after the September approval. If we keep the um, debt rate at thirty pennies, okay, we would see an early payoff of eleven million dollars. Okay, in comparison to a twenty-eight penny, well, all these other numbers are the same. The only thing that's changing on the twenty-eight pennies is this number here, this early payoff. So we'd be able to pay off seven million sooner, whenever we issue, whenever we issue money next, whenever we restructure debt next. And so what that would do is by staying at the thirty pennies, we'd be able to realize three point two million in interest savings over the life of these maturities. Okay, so, you know, the, the value of three point two million is basically the value of, of one penny. Okay, in terms of, you know, the, what, what a penny costs us. If we, again, if we maintain that rate, we'd be able to have that savings. And so.
Can I ask a clarifying question just for you? So you're saying we would pay off eleven point one million dollars in debt early?
Right.
Plus realize a three point two million dollars?
Well, that's what would, that was what would help us.
Right, okay. Oh, thank you.
Okay. And so what we're, what we're trying to do is we're trying to maintain the flexibility going to the next summer, going into twenty seventeen by maintaining our tax rate. You know, again, we made the recommendation to go down to twenty-eight pennies before the, the, the um, the litigation came through. And, you know, that, the way things came down from a Supreme Court decision really. And, you know, that, the way things came down from a, a Supreme Court decision really was surprising, especially, uh, what their, what their opinion was, given everything else they said about the system. You know, so it's just, they, um, uh, they kinda took away a lot of our potential optimism for what would happen on the state side. And so if we're able to maintain the two penny rate, I mean, tho- those two pennies, then that would take us into the tax swap, which I'll talk about here in a minute. So you've seen this slide before in terms of what the proposed rate would be at twenty-eight pennies in comparison to fifteen, sixteen, and the impact to our taxpayers. Remember that, that percentage change for the average home value of, uh, uh, would be just over eight, uh, eight percent. If we kept the thirty pennies, that va- that percentage change comes up to, uh, just under nine. But the, and the monthly impact is, uh, three dollars and ninety-three cents for the average home on a monthly basis. Because of the value growth, okay, and maintaining the thirty pennies. So that's the difference between the twenty-eight pennies. I'm just full transparency here. That's the difference between the, the twenty-eight pennies and the thirty pennies. But again, we'd be able to maintain, we'd be able to, if we maintain the tax rate, we'd be able to pay off some of the debt early, saving three point two million. But then that would position us for a, uh, potential tax swap the next year, which is what this is talking about here. So next summer, next summer could be an interesting summer. So what we would be proposing, then if we, if we would increase our M and O rate to a dollar six, keep, bring the INS rate down to twenty-eight pennies, we would have a net increase in revenue to the, to the general fund of seven million dollars. So this is where the, you know, one of the few times that, that your strategy for the debt service and, and the M and O fund are overlapping. Usually they're just totally separate, and we're looking at things totally separate. But this is where we would be, we would be overlapping. So we don't have to make a decision on this part now. There's a lot to think about, uh, going into the next time here. So these are the things that we're gonna, that are gonna be on our mind before we come to you next spring, saying, hey, we think we may wanna do a tax swap, which would initiate a tax ratification election. So again, you know, we had the litigation ruling. We'll have to see how the legislature reacts to that. But again, the state revenues are down. I showed you some of the information on the sales taxes. Um, they have publicly committed funding in, in some of the other priorities. Uh, just the initial outlook isn't encouraging. We are on the plus side. Uh, the resource allocation teams are, are, are busy. They're working. They're gonna be working on program efficiencies to help us with, uh, our budgets on the M and O side. Uh, we will have uncertainty of local value growth. I mean, hopefully that'll continue, you know, to maintain. I mean, some of the signs are encouraging. I don't see us going, you know, going negative. You know, even with the, uh, with the oil going down, Fort Bend County is still growing. I mean, you can still see the, the houses being sold. Um, so, but there is uncertainty there. Uh, we will have to absorb the costs associated with three campuses. We've talked about that. You know, the, um, uh, so, and we've allotted for that. We plan for that. But where we're at now, in terms of thinking about our financials for next year, is a potential deficit going into the, the seventeen, eighteen budget planning of nine million, which is before raises. But we know there'll be a lot of pressure to do something from a compensation perspective, given the, uh, just the, the small amount we've been able to do this year. So we, we have our work cut out for us, but we really need to try to maintain as much flexibility as possible going into the next year. And so that's why our, that's why our recommendation is, is to go ahead and maintain the, the rate at the, the thirty pennies. If we did that, so, you know, our, our next steps, at the, at the meeting on the fifteenth is when you, you call the date for the tax rate hearing. Uh, you do need to approve just the chapter forty-one selection, uh, the, the approval of the supplement. Uh, we would be publicizing, again, the truth and taxation calculation. You have to publicize that. And then in September, you'd have the tax rate hearing and adoption. We bring an amend, uh, budget amendment to you as we spoke before. Talked about the commercial paper. And then also just one of the things, uh, one of, one of the technicalities, we will need approval, uh, a bond resolution to approve that, the debt schedule for the potential early payment of debt. The way the truth and taxation calculations work, we have to have that in place because we can't assume moving forward that we're gonna issue new money. Okay, in terms of, you know, that's just the rules when you do the truth and taxation calculation. We can't assume that we're gonna issue new money. We know we're gonna issue again. I mean, we have all of these major bond projects going on. We know that, but once we start all these projects and, and, and contracts that have been approved, and these buildings start going up, that is gonna cost us money. So we will have to issue. Uh, so what we have to do in order to, uh, stay compliant with the truth and taxation publications is to actually take an action where you would approve the potential early payment of debt. But you, that, there will not be any specific transaction where that happens. You'll see that in the bond orders that we bring to you whenever we do issue new monies in the, in the future and how that, uh, debt is structured at that time. So anyway, fifteen slides. I'm sorry for the length, but I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bassett. Do we have questions on this from the trustees? Mr. Burden?
Comment. Thank you very much for all your hard work. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Bassett. We like saving money. We like hearing about ways we can save money. We appreciate that. All right. Review the propos- uh, item F, review proposed fiscal and budgetary strategy for sixteen, seventeen. Do we have questions on this from the trustees? Mrs. James?
I have a question on this. It, uh, the new section that's been added is talking about, um, delinquent receivables. And I know we've talked about that before, but this paragraph refers to some guidelines, written district guidelines. And I was wondering where those are housed. Are they on the website available to parents in the community or?
What page are we on, Ms. James? Sorry.
It's okay. I'm on page seventy-four of our total board book, which is page five of the fiscal and budgetary strategy. And it's the add addition of the paragraph about collection of delinquent receivables.
That, okay, so that, that isn't necessarily published, the guidelines that we have. I mean, we've been working with the collection agency for the first time this, uh, this past year, you know, based on what, um, the fiscal policy changes we made last time to work on the, the collections. But what we are doing is that we are making sure that we're, that we're any of the, the families that would owe this. We are sending them letters on, on, on an ongoing basis, making sure they understand, you know, what's coming. That they're not gonna be hit out of the, hit out of the blue or surprised by, by anything if, if they do go to collections. And so, but those are just, uh, those are just written procedures that we have internally. That's not something that we publish per se.
Okay, well, I was wondering, i- i- and maybe it's, it needs to be a different document or something. But I, I guess what I'm trying to, would like is to, to have those guidelines or something published so people are, so it's clear what the expectations are or what the consequences are for failure to pay. And maybe it doesn't need to be, you know, the full, your district guidelines that you're gonna use in your department. But it seems like we wanna be kinda transparent. And as a person, say, just a regular person in my neighborhood, someone else in the neighborhood gets the letter. And sometimes I end up, and not, you know, not so much now, but in the past, would end up as a resource for, 'cause I say, go talk to somebody else, but I would end up as a resource for them. And so be able to have the, kinda what the deal is on the website seems to me to be helpful. But I don't know what other people think.
The way I would reference that is, like, perhaps this is written district guidelines. Should that be procedure? Because our ultimate goal is to have all of procedures posted online, just like we have policy online today. So I think if we just simply added to this to refer to it as district procedures, and then write those procedures and house those online, then I think that would address that.
But to just be on the short and sweet side, I mean, it's basically, you know, if you don't pay within ni- within ninety days, assuming you're getting, uh, an update on that every month, then, you know, then you will be sent to collections. But, you know, we, we should have that in the procedures. We just haven't, uh, quite gotten there yet.
Okay, well, I, Dr. Dupree, what you suggest would, I think, changing guidelines to procedures and then having the procedures available on the website, I think would be great.
We're certainly meanable to that.
Thank you. All right. We're on six G. The proposed underwriters to be used by the district in connection with future bond debt. Do we have questions on this? Six H, we have several proposed resolutions. The first one is the district's investment strategy and authorization of investment brokers. Questions on this?
Yeah, I, I have a question.
Mr. George?
I see there are numerous investment firms or broker dealers are mentioned here. What is the criteria? How do, how do we select them?
Well, one of the ways, oh, sorry. Uh, yes, sir. One of the ways we select them is, is if they're, if they're interested. I mean, we, we get, we get solicitations from these folks asking to be, to be added to the list. Same with the, with the underwriting firms. And so what we'll do is we, we see what they're, you know, what, what they're offering, and if it's something that could match up. Uh, but we, we speak to them. We see if they're interested. We see what kind of ideas they have, how they might be able to help us.
Okay, okay. So there is a selection process you go through?
Yes.
First of all, you see they are interested, then you, what do you look in them, uh, when you select a company?
Well, what we look for is, I mean, we look for creativity. We look for a track record. We wanna make sure that they're, that they're, that they're adding value. We don't wanna necessarily have too, too long of a list because, you know, the, the folks that are helping us, we wanna make sure they get business on a recurring basis.
Okay.
But if somebody comes in that, that, you know, is, is recommended, we'll talk to what's going on with some of our peers at other districts that are using them. If they're happy with them, then, then we'll consider adding them to the list.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. All right, second resolution. Is authorizing Fort Bend to participate in the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance. Do we have questions on this? Hearing none. Moving on to number three. Resolution authorizing Fort Bend to participate in the Region Nineteen Educational Service Centers Purchasing Cooperative. Do we have questions on this? All right, moving along. They're leaving.
That's okay, they're, yeah.
All right, we've got some proposed easements in six I. A twenty-four-foot wide easement in the final, uh, in the final plat for the new West Side Ag facility. Do we have questions on that? All right. The second easement, a ten-foot wide electrical easement along the backside of Baines Middle School for, to Center Point Energy. Questions? Number three, signage and landscaping easement to Grand Vista Community Association for Elementary School Fifty. Questions? All right, six J. Uh, modification to the October nineteenth, Fort Bend Independent School District, selection of testing, adjusting, and balancing firm for the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning of two assigned projects. Do we have questions from the trustees on this one?
Tell me, um...
Nope, turn, Ms. Helliger.
Someone just give me a brief explanation of this one, real quick. 'Cause we're, we're talking about twenty fifteen.
Mr. Perez?
Little impaired on my height there. So what, what occurred, uh, here was that we, uh, issued both test and balance and commissioning to the same firm. And so basically, you, you can't have the, the same one doing the commissioning as the test and balance 'cause it's kinda like the fox watch in the hen house. And so what we're coming back to you with is we're, uh, looking at correcting that and bringing a different firm that was previously approved by the board as a, a firm that could provide these services, uh, to go ahead and do so.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Okay, six K. We have several purchases exceeding fifty thousand dollars. The first one is learning A to Z. Mrs. James?
Well, I'm just gonna share this question. You don't have to answer it, but I wrote, how does this res- this is just like a little conversation starter for our EG local conversation. How does this resource align with our curriculum development philosophy? Because I assume this was part of the, uh, part of a resource, of, uh, curriculum resource. So it just occurred to me, if we had a development philosophy, then we would be able to know if this aligned or not.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Always keeping us on our toes. All right, K two, recess coaching services and related items. Mrs. James?
Killing me, aren't you? Um, I just wanna make sure this isn't structured recess.
That was the question I had.
I'm pretty sure it's not, because I know what this is, but I just wanna clarify.
It's not, but we're gonna ask Stephanie Kellum to give us some specifics.
I don't think you're on. Yeah, I don't think you're on.
Um, it is not structured recess. It provides the kids much more opportunities to have multiple options to play with. So we're finding that there's reduced conflict, um, less bullying, um, less exclusion from activities with these services. So the kids have more opportunity to explore different activities and have the opportunity to have the skill set to be empowered socially and emotionally and physically, so.
And what schools will we be implementing?
These will be for the edge campuses.
Edge campuses only? Correct, for now.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. James, you have another question?
Well, I just wanna say thank you, Ms. Kellum, because it's something I've heard about, I've heard about before. I've probably heard you speak about it, and I think it's a great idea. So I hope it is, proves to be as successful as, as, uh, other cases I've heard of and that we can spread it around the district.
All right, K three, discovery education. Questions? K four, Turn It In, which I am very familiar with, having two in high school now. Questions on this?
I, I wanna ask a question about the discovery education.
Oh, moving back.
Yeah, I know. You guys went really fast. But my question about it is, because I didn't see where in here, um, again, this is a resource ish item. It made me think again of curriculum development. But are these, uh, resources, what age levels, and are they available to parents? Especially since I saw Spanish language videos and things that looked very, uh, uh, you know, technology-based.
Um, I'll, I'll attempt to answer that. So these are resources that are, are used, um, primarily secondary? I'm sorry, I, I, I'm, let me correct myself. They're K twelve resources, but they're used, uh, on campus primarily. So our teachers will ax- the, access them, uh, as supplemental resources, um, their videos that they'll use in the classroom.
So these are the types of things that would be embedded in our curriculum? And they are embedded in our curriculum, so another reason to put EG local at the top of the list.
Thank you, Dr. Faust. Can I skip Turn It In? Have you looked at those? Okay, Skyward. We all okay with Skyward? All right, time and attendance system. Any questions? Number seven, identity management system. Moving on. Data center renovations. We're excited about the data center renovations. All right, WebSmart. Facilities management software is number ten. Uh-oh, Mrs. James.
I, I can take the heckling. There's always somebody. Okay, so my question on this is that it shows that this is coming... Is this the right one?
Yep. Facilities management software.
Okay, never mind. I was on WebSmart.
Uh-oh, we, we went past that. We blew past it. You said, keep going. Now we're going back. Now we're going backwards again.
Okay, well, on the WebSmart one, it says that it's come, look, somebody loves me. It says that it's coming out of the general fund, and I wondered if that was accurate, or if it really is coming, it really should be listed as coming out of child nutrition.
Ms., Ms. James, that's my mistake, that is, that will be coming out of, out of child nutrition. There was forty-something items I was looking at, I apologize for that.
No worries, I just want you to know I read them all.
Thank God.
I think we could tell.
It's different running the meetings than it is sitting over there. All right, number eleven, district electrical services. Number twelve, age-back maintenance. I'm shooting for eleven, guys, I'm, I'm going. Thirteen, painting services and related items. We'll adjourn before Mr. Rice gets back, if they want to. Number fourteen, district vehicles. Number fifteen, truck and tractor rentals. Oh, and number eleven is Mr. Rice. All right, I mean, number L. Six L is to...
I can ask some questions to fill time.
No, we're good. Review proposed, and, review proposed Audit Committee's recommendation to engage Gibson Consulting. Do we have questions on this? We did, it's just to actually engage them for the services that the Audit Committee, that are pursuant to the Audit Committee's plan for audits next year. It was a formality we needed to go through. Are there questions? I think we're good. All right, six M, review the proposed endorsement of a candidate to represent Region Four as a director on the Tasby Board of Directors. We need to discuss this. Mr. Rice?
I know George Anne Wrightmeyer, who is an immediate past president of the Gulf Coast Area Association of School Boards. And you all have probably met her at one of those meetings at Region Four. So she's been very active in this area, advocating for public education. She is currently serving on the Tasby Board of Directors with me, and seems very competent and very engaged. Unfortunately, I don't know the other lady from Crosby. So I, I can't make any comments about her.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do we have additional comments by the board members? Mrs. James?
I, I know George Anne as well, and have worked with her on different things, but I do not know the other lady. And George Anne's been very pleasant to work with.
All right, thank you, Mrs. James, anyone else? All right, do, does the board feel comfortable endorsing George Anne Wrightmeyer?
Based on the recommendations of our fellow board members, I would feel comfortable with that recommendation.
Okay. That's how we'll move forward, then. All right, review minutes of previous meetings, do we have any comments or questions about the minutes? We have no audience response this evening, which means...
I move that we adjourn.
Excellent, we are adjourned at ten fifty-five, I beat eleven o'clock. Very good, thank you, guys.